You can sit any pace you want. You're good. It's us. We don't want it messed up. Grab a moment for the pledge of allegiance, please. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, literate and justice for all.
Reverend Wookiee?
Begin tonight by reading two verses from Psalms 128. Blessed is everyone who fears the Lord, who walks in his ways; you shall eat a fruit with the labor of your hand, you shall be happy, and it shall be well with you. So, Father, we come humbly before you tonight. We raise up before you Mayor Snow and Jody Brown, for the trustees as well, for Steven and Richard and Eric and Nathan. Father, we pray for them. We ask for wisdom and discernment. Father, we pray, Father, for the business of the village be carried out dutifully. So, we just raise them up to you, ask your blessing, your favor upon them, as they go about the business of the village of Walton. We pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I'll read it. Get a little bit better. Hey, good evening, everyone. Okay, the first thing that we need to do is the election results and appointments. Show you if I do that right. It was a close election. Very close.
Steven, we're both re-elected, so welcome back.
Thanks, everybody.
It was tough. It was close.
And you're keeping your committees all the same.
Yep.
The only change on the appointments is Dr. Michael Freeman will now be the help officer. That's it.
Okay. Next thing, the public hearing, conditional use, 50 and Platte Street. Need a motion to open.
Motion to open.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Discussion?
No Gail's here.
Gail's here. Yeah, no, we got all the paperwork. And if anybody on the board here has any questions or any comments about it, I will contain it. Basically, you want to make the one family house that you purchased into two or three apartments, correct? One would be a studio and the other two one bedrooms, I guess? Yeah. I know that you have, I spoke to Josh, you've made all the adjustments you have to in with the insulation, the separations. You're going to do a driveway on the side, so we have plenty of parking. And so, I spoke to him this morning. He said that you've done everything that he requested. You did plans and everything. So... If there's no...
So, not hearing any opposition, I would mean that we grant the conditional use.
We've got to close the hearing.
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry.
Got to close the hearing first, yeah.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Now.
Not hearing any opposition. I motion that we grant the conditional use.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Didn't hurt that much, right? Well, thank you. Because, you know, and I might say myself, there are a lot of, there are many apartment owners in the village. Many of them are absentee owners, which I would be probably an objection to. Yours are one of the cleanest, most kept up place. I see you every morning out there, working. So, I mean, I want to thank you. I wish everyone followed the same way that you take care of your properties. We would be really, really much better.
You'd make this village a much better place.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
And our car is cleaner.
Okay, so you're, what, going to stay or go? You can go. You're good.
Thank you very much.
Josh is out until Friday, Gail. Yeah, but I'll, yeah, I'll give him the information when he gets back.
Okay, item... Yeah, I was going, oh, okay.
We got to do our public...
We got to do the public hearing first. I'll do it, okay? The next thing is a public hearing, number two, local law, number two and three, for water and sewer rates. I need a motion to open.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry.
Questions, concerns? Let me see what they're currently putting here.
No. You want to say what we're...
A very moderate rate to keep our waters running?
Yes. The, what, we can say what it is. How much? I have it down here. Water, so, Jody put it down before.
Median rate for 1,000 gallons, $6.15. Minimum charges per quarter, $48. This is a capital improvement charge, and is charged regardless of water usage alike thereof. Umeed one way, so annually.
Not a very big raise, but we have to raise some in order to meet the billing that we have. Everything's gone up tremendously. So, we've kept it to as low as possible, so that it wouldn't be an overburden to money anybody.
And the sewer capital went up like 45 cents per unit per quarter, so that went up to $16. So, that's minimal as well.
Yeah.
Individually, that, for the most expensive ones we have out there, it's about $20 a quart. And it's necessary, we're going to have to do some work on that water system, and there wasn't enough money being going into the capital, and it was necessary to raise it. The total amount it actually raises for the village is like $11,000 for a year, is all it's going to be.
Which is not much.
Which would spread out amongst the entire tax base, it seems minimal.
Yeah, we wind up with an increase of $20 for a year.
On the most expensive ones, not the, not the single ones. Yeah. Okay, so we need a motion? To close the hearing? Yep.
So moved.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay. Oops, sorry.
Um, we just need a...
Do we need separate motions for law number two and for number three?
Nope, we can do them all together.
Okay, I motion will be approved those laws. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Abstracts. Everybody's had a chance, hopefully, to look at them. If there's no more discussion, I need a motion to approve the abstracts.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry. Mr. Hulse, you were here, you spoke to Dick Dwyer before, he told you about the, your light, your request.
And I would just like to address the board, that's fine.
Go ahead, I addressed you first, go ahead.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, so, I felt very disrespected with the letter that I received, because the motion was made and accepted last month, to vote on it this month, and I get a predetermined letter addressed from one trustee stating that it's going to be denied, and no vote was formally brought up properly amongst the board, and I felt like that was not correct.
Well, let me, maybe you didn't get all the information. We had a budget hearing the other day, and we had brought it up at the budget hearing. So, you're right in what you're saying, but we did have a budget hearing, and we talked about it at the budget hearing. But we can officially talk about it right now, again, so that you understand. I had every, I asked every member of the board to go up and take a look at it at least once or twice, to see they, where you live at nighttime, and to see the issue that's going on. And I had the DPW superintendent go up and take a look at it as well. And we can take a vote on it right now, if you want to do, see something in front of us, how they feel.
I mean, you can do that, but I already feel like your decision is predetermined, and...
No, it wasn't predetermined. It was, we, like I said, we had a budget meeting, and it was brought up at the budget meeting between everybody, and we talked about it. And that's when it was decided. We didn't think that you would, probably should have waited until tonight to make the official vote.
Yes, you should have.
But...
Absolutely, that's a wrong decision on your part.
We had, it was another open meeting, though.
But it was an open meeting, we, everybody was invited to come. I, you know, it wasn't that we were doing a secretive meeting.
When a motion is made and accepted...
Right.
That is what I heard at the meeting. That is when it's going to be addressed, is today. You made a mistake, and did it at another meeting that was not meant for this.
Well, this meeting, there means like there's anything you want at these meetings. They're not, it's not a one meeting. Okay, I'm not...
It's...
You got a point, I mean, I...
I do, I have a very valid point.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you that point. But the majority of people had said no.
Oh.
But if you want to hear that again...
Sure, I want it on record, on recorded, on the...
Okay, take a real call vote.
You need a motion before you vote, so if you want to do another motion...
And just, no, so you know, I'm going to post this on social media, and I'm going to address the residents of Walton, and I'm going to let them know that they maybe should reconsider who they elect and vote. Just think about that before you say yes or no, because I'm going to address it to the people and the people I make friends with here, and with all the citizens of Walton.
So, we should base our decision on...
No, 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 you should, you should base it on doing the right thing, and you should base it on that you made a motion, and you accepted it, and then you went to another meeting and talked about it, and then sent me a predetermined letter saying that I was being denied. So, you should take that into consideration, sir.
You were just told, sir, that that letter was not a predetermined letter.
Well, if it was supposed to be voted on tonight, and I'm being denied before it's voted on, that's predetermined. So, you should think before you speak.
You got a lot of orders to give out here tonight, don't you?
You're public servants. I'm the public. That's how this works.
Okay, all right, we're not... It's not very public right now, does it?
It's perfectly public and open to the people, and no one sitting here would probably think that I'm wrong.
I don't appreciate your disrespect.
And I'm not being disrespectful, you've disrespected me.
So far, you've cut off everybody that's spoken to you in the room.
Okay, so I will let you speak, I will give you your proper time.
I don't have anything to say to you.
Then why did you open up and say something in the first place?
Why don't I open up what?
Conversation between me and you, if you had nothing to say.
I'm addressing you because you're addressing not...
All right, let's...
You don't need to have an attitude, sir.
Let's, let's, everybody, not, if you have, well, I'll, I'll show you a vote. We had another meeting, we maybe should have let you know, it was in the public, it was out in the paper, that we had another meeting, and it was open to the public. If, we could have probably waited, you're right, but it wasn't disrespectful, it wasn't predetermined, we had talked about it then. So, we'll do it again for your...
Oh, you mean we were performing our duty?
Yeah.
Diligently? Thank you.
So, we're talking about the, the light on, what's your address, let me put this...
47 Shepherd Street.
47 Shepherd Street. He had requested to have an extra street light put on across the street for him.
For safety measures.
On his part.
I was for it. I was all for it. I, I spoke with the DPW guys, and I looked at the way the lights are done, every other, every other pole, which is the way it is in the entire village. And the problem is that when we put this light in, which is not going to make a big difference in the end, then everybody else in the village is going to want another light as well.
But it's not the same as every other street in the village, and it's on a hill, and you see that it's blocked off.
The light's not going to change, the light's not going to change the banks on the sides of the driveway.
It's going to be able to see my open easement of my driveway, but...
All right, so what is your vote?
My vote, and it, I, like I said, initially, off the gun, I was for it, but in the end, we can't do it.
Eric?
And I apologize for that. I mean, I understand both the arguments, you know, the idea that we have a uniform lighting setup in the village. I think we should do more to improve it. I think there should be more research done on possibly updating that. So, at this point, I'm staying on the vote.
You what?
You're abstaining?
Yep.
I've already discussed it with the gentleman, and my feeling is that, one, our streetlights are not necessarily intended to light up someone's driveway, which I do understand that there's, his is a difficult situation. The streetlights, if we modified it and moved the pole, we'd be taking the light out at the intersection. If we were to have the same number of lights, if we moved it back down the hill, we'd have a long stretch up over by Miller Avenue, which would, again, it would create more problems than it would sound. So, I realistically think, and I've discussed with them, there are other ways to address it, but I don't think it's something that we can do, and so I'd have to say no.
I was originally for adding the extra light. I observed the surroundings, I made observations, I discussed it with officials from this village, and in light of that, my observations found that adding the light wouldn't make a difference, so therefore, my vote is no.
Okay. No, I don't vote, I don't have to vote on this, because the majority, if it was a tie, I would vote. But I want you to know, it's not that we have anything personal on this. We've had a number of people come up and ask for streetlights. I understand yours is a different condition for you.
And I've went through all the channels that I've bothered you for over a year, just to get denied here today, and I want you to take that, too.
Okay.
I've sat and taken time out of my day each and every time to call NYSAG over 10 times to get a representative to call back and call you, when you told me to call them.
All right.
But I understand, the majority rules, the ruling is no, and that is it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Department heads, Jason?
You can come, too. Bring up the chair, Shane.
Everybody get the report?
Yes.
Yes. Questions? Comments, concerns?
Lots of concerns.
Turbidity. Is a concern.
Yes.
I'm sure you're going to tell us about that.
Yeah, we were over our turbidity limit again for the fourth month in a row. Two violations this month. The second violation was when we went over 5.0 for seven hours and 20 minutes, which is a whole nother violation level.
Has New York City held us financially attached for that yet?
Not as of yet. But they are concerned. We had a DEP inspection last week, and he is concerned, and he said that if need be, he will reach out as a regulatory to Lactalis to let them know how concerned he is. So, shortly after that, the turbidity is went up last week, and I sent out an email, and they didn't wear, so...
That would be helpful, I feel like, at this point.
Yeah.
Well, what actually may be really helpful, if someone from there went down to them and explained, not you, I mean, DEC, and said, this is, this is something I can't continue. Sometimes they, they know that there's a problem, but they don't, sometimes grasp how big of an issue it really is.
Right.
Especially in the watershed.
Yeah, and, you know, we have both, two regulatory agencies in where we are because of the watershed, and they're both aware of the situation going on there, and they, they talk to each other as well, so... I haven't spoken with him since I sent the email, so not sure what his plans might be at this point, but I'm sure this week we'll shed some light on that, maybe.
Correct me if I'm wrong, when we talked to him, if you took a jar of the water that we're discharging in clean water instead of the side by side, you can't see any difference between the two?
Not really.
But yet, they're saying our sample is exceeding, it's opaque, so to speak.
Yep.
But it's something visually you can see, and you have had it tested, try to find out what's causing it.
Yeah, it's tested all the time, Shane can speak better to that, but...
Permit testing that we have to send out on a weekly basis, and that meets, other than turbidity, it meets all permit limits.
The amount of sludge that you guys are having to ship out of there has increased, right?
Yeah, depending on the month, it has increased, yes. Which is a direct result of increased loading. So, and the screw press doesn't like all the extra milk in the water, so therefore, we're using a different press, which is sending wetter sludge to the landfill. So, it's, it's just a snowball effect for the entire plant. It's not just one aspect, it's, everything is touched by this. So... Because it recirculates all the time, you don't just, it may come today, but it may take four or five days to get rid of what happened today, and then it keeps happening. So, then you're, you just keep recirculating it around inside the plant before you can really get rid of it. When they were off a couple of weeks ago, we didn't really clear up until probably Thursday?
Yeah, the end of the week.
And they stopped production on Saturday? So, that's how long it took to clear up from what they had going on, and they started production again on, taking milk on probably Sunday and production on Monday. So, we were only out of the woods for a couple of days, and then boom, they hit us again. But in that stretch, things definitely cleared up. We were able to run the screw pressing, it ran great, we were able, everything out, we were able to lower our chemical doses, everything straightened out, and then once they got ripping again, and now we're right back to where we were last time I was here. So...
As far as response?
Not very good. If they have a chlorine issue or something like that, they will respond to that, but all of the emails that we've sent is for turbidity or the plant turning white, anything like that goes unresponded to.
I know, they don't seem to know what is causing the issues.
Yeah, so it seems like it's going to be an ongoing issue unless someone like, goes down to the plant and says, hey, you're just taking care of it all.
And, and that would be out of pure, you know, that, that would, they'd just be being nice to do that, because the village holds the permits, so the village is responsible for that water. So, really, their task at keeping the village in line with what the permit states.
Right.
So, if they do lean on Lactalis, that would just be out of their good graces, to try to help us out. So, you know, but as it keeps going, it's going to get worse from regulatory, for sure, would be my guess. And we're doing everything we can do with it, and there's pumping chemical through that place like no tomorrow, and it's not, it's not doing anything. So...
Overtasking the system, you know? Puts a roadblock on any other industry that could, that wants to come.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So, I mean, it's critical that they get that under control.
Yeah, and if another large entity wanted to come in and build, I don't know if the DEC would allow it because of what's going on right now. So, it's a, it's a huge, it's not just one user doing something, it affects everyone in this village greatly. If DEC decides to find the village, and it's the village taxpayers that pay the fine, it's not, I mean, Lactalis would have their piece, but they're to blame, not everyone else. So, it's a, it's a, it can be a very big issue very quickly. So, we're hopeful that they figure something out, and I think they're, I hope they're doing their due diligence, but we don't know what they're doing, because they don't tell us what they've got going on. And that may make it a little bit easier to work through it all, but we don't know what they might have found, what they might be leaning towards, what they might think, we have no idea.
Should we make another meeting with them? With that, I don't know if that would...
I don't know.
When we approached them with it, they didn't, they didn't seem to know what was going on.
Yeah.
Right.
And they were expecting us to be able to tell them, okay, this is what's happening. And they don't know why either. And I know you've had, you've sent a test out, and nobody can tell, nobody seems to be able to tell us what's in the water that's making the problem.
Right.
You know when it happens, but you don't know specifically why.
Right, and other than it turning white, I mean, it's quite obvious to us that it's dairy related, but I don't know what they're doing over there that could be driving that. It's regular production, if they're having a lot of spills that nobody's reporting, if they've got a leak someplace, I have no idea.
Okay.
But at the very least, when they have a large discharge of product, they let us know.
When they spill stuff, they do call.
They've been good about that.
Yes.
They wake him up very, a lot, a lot.
I was there last night, and Friday night, and Friday morning.
But even that, too, our tank that we catch all that in is only so big.
And we have to feed it back to process it, which creates issues, too.
Right. You know, so once they fill that tank, then, then you have no place to catch it. It's great they're calling, but at some point, you run out of room for that, too, because you can't just put that back in tomorrow, you've got to do it slowly. And then when it sits in the tank for too long, you guys get pitchers of foam all over the yard. So... All right, that's where we're at with that.
No simple solution.
Not on our end. I wish that there was, you know, and I think I speak for everyone involved on our side that we want them to produce as much as they can possibly produce over there. But we're connected at the hip. So, if they do things right, then we can work right, then it all works great, but if they don't keep us in the loop as to what's going on, then, then we have to be the bad guy.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we want them to run as much flat out all the time, but if we can't take it, they need to help us through that. That's all we're asking. So, hopefully, we can get a handle on it soon, but I would imagine that sooner or later, probably regulatory is going to get involved, and hopefully, they do it, it's a phone call to them, we can get work through it, but...
I'm wondering if there's any, if they were called any, if someone called any other dairy plant and find out if they had any similar issues, and maybe they came to a conclusion what it was. I, I don't think we're creating the wheel here. I, I think, I'm sure there's got to be some other dairy plant, somebody that's had this issue before. Maybe talk to John, I'll talk to John, and I'll give a call tomorrow morning. It, it could be just something they're not, a process they're not doing totally 100% correctly and not realizing it, and...
Right.
Right, you know what I mean? Because if you do it wrong once, and you keep doing it, you just think it's the way it's being done, and then it's, and it seems like that's what's happening here, it's constantly having the same problem.
Yeah, and it is, it's the same problem.
Yeah. I'll, I'll call John and want to, and ask him to...
Yeah, and it couldn't hurt, for sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Other than that, things have been working pretty well. We went through our SCADA upgrade, we're working through the issues with computer upgrades that everybody has, but seems like we're getting a bad wheel here. But we're working on replacing some equipment. Delaware Engineering's been down there working on some stuff as well, I'm sure they'll bring you up to date on that, and we had our, DEC was on site for a quick visit, and DEP was there for their quarterly inspection. And the generator's been serviced, that's good to go. Everything else is running well, except for the white color and the ongoing problems.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Have a good one.
Here's the board. When I requested you...
No.
Yeah. Take care.
Thanks.
Bill?
Hello. Hi. So, a couple of project updates, I guess a couple of asks of the, of the board, related to the, to the wastewater plant, I and I, you know, we've talked about for a couple of years. The village was awarded a grant to do an investigation to that end, so we are asking the board to consider authorizing that to move forward. We prepared a proposal for the village to do the I and I study, which would entail going out with a cleaning crew, would put cameras in the collection system to look for leaks in the piping, to retain them, go along with them, see what we find, and then prepare a summary report of what was found, if there's leaky pipes, or leaky manholes, um, and then submit that to the state for consideration and providing funding to make the fix, um, for what was found to be deficient in the, in the system. So, um, the, the grant that was awarded to the village was valued at $30,000. Um, there is a $6,000 local match, um, that the, the board authorized matching. The way the state structures this, this particular funding, um, when they issued the finance agreement, they wire the village $15,000, half of the value, in this case, 15,000. You do the work, um, at the end of the project, when they have agreed that you did the work and did the study and, and checked all the boxes, they would provide the, the second 15. Um, so you have to front a portion of the cost, um, and then get reimbursed at the end for that 15 plus the six local match. So we would ask the board to, uh, consider moving forward with that, to do the engineering services agreement, to allow us to bring the people with the cameras to come and look for the system.
So ultimately, it's $30,000, 15, then we do the work, then 15 more, and we could go to six.
Yep.
I would absolutely make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. No, you, you got certain areas you gotta hit first, 'cause obviously we can't do the whole village.
Right. We had, we had initially asked for $100,000 to do, to try to do as much of the village as, as we could. That was reduced what was awarded, so 30 was awarded, so we'll probably look to concentrate, um, on some of the areas where we have deeper manholes that are closer to the streams, that may be more affected by high groundwater levels. Um, so if we get the paperwork in from the state approving everything and, and kicking in the first 15, it'd be, we'd like to be out in the next month, um, before the, everything turns green, that's usually when the groundwater's the highest, and, um, you would expect to have the most INI issues. So, that's why we're kinda pushing this tonight, so we, we have it on the books and can get going with it. The needs evaluation, so we've talked about that, um, for a couple of months, it's kind of an ongoing discussion of when funding might be available to do a, a bigger, um, bigger project to replace some of the older equipment. One of the ongoing projects is work in the Seabud Building, which is funded by New York City. Um, they had approved replacement of a series of valves, um, to the, at the facility. Uh, we met with a contractor last week, um, to initiate that project and come up with our game plan. Um, there's gonna be some staging and temporary piping that needs to be installed to allow for the specific pieces of equipment to be replaced at a given time, and still maintain the plant in operation. Um, we can't just turn off the, um, the back building for two weeks, um, we have to keep that in, in place to maintain the permit levels as best we can. So, um, we are asking the board to consider, um, seeking a general services agreement with an electrical and a mechanical contractor, to have somebody, um, onboard for the miscellaneous repairs and have a service agreement with them. So what we would get would be a, um, a, a scheduled values, you know, their hourly rate for their different types of technicians, um, and then we would have them available to the village and comply with the procurement rules and regulations to do the work. The seabed work is 100% funded by New York City, um, because they're the ones that require that specific component be in place. So, we're asking the board to consider advertising for service agreements for installation of some of those parts and pieces.
Motion, I'll ask the board to advertise.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Kind of switching to the other end of the pipe, um, on the, the water system, um, separately, the village does have a project underway, um, to upgrade the water system, the biggest piece will be replacing water lines, um, but also work at the water tanks and one of the wells, um, so that work is, um, in, in design now. Uh, surveyors have been out over the last couple of weeks, so you may have seen, um, some paint marks on the ground, and guys walking around with a stick in their hand. So that's progressing. Um, and once the design's done, and it goes to the DOH, they review, hopefully approve everything, and then it would go to, go out to bid. Um, there is some pretty long lead times on some of the different equipment and materials that are associated with the repairs. Um, pipe is actually up to almost a year lead time on the ductile iron pipe right now, so, um, that may affect when we're able to get construction done and whatnot, but we'll keep working through the process.
What's the timeline to spend?
Uh, we have five years from when we were awarded the work in 2020. It either came in in 2020 or 2021.
It was last year.
Time flies.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's a five-year clock. Um, we're good from that standpoint, but we wanna, wanna keep it moving. The other project underway on the, on the waterside is the Curry Well, um, so the village is using the, the ARPA funding that was provided by the federal government to replace, um, or replace one of the wells that's been in service, uh, 1967. Um, so the test well was installed last month by Lane Christensen, um, it was overseen by Sterling Environmental, which is a hydrogeology firm, um, that's their specialty. So the, the test pump was installed, or the test well, the pumping was done. From a water quantity standpoint, it looked like there was a good, good volume of water there, um, they were projecting, you know, 500 gallons a minute of capacity. At the same time, they also took a number of samples of the water, um, quality, you know, to see if there's any high levels of any different, of the litany of things that have to be tested for on a municipal water supply. So, um, we're waiting on the lab tests to come back, some of that stuff takes a month or so to get the test results from the lab. Uh, when we get that, Sterling will prepare a report to say we, everything's clean, or there's any issues. So far, it looks like, you know, it was a positive, um, test from the volume standpoint, so that was good. Um, if it, if everything does check out, the next step would be to install the larger well, so we put a six-inch one to start, the finish well will probably be a 12-inch well, um, so we would put that in and do a bigger test, do a three-day test, test for more things. If all that checks out, then we would send all that to the health department, um, and ask them for permission to put the well into service, um, and then look to tie it into the existing distribution system, um, and the existing treatment system, so we don't have to build a new treatment plan. So, that's in the works, should have another update on that, probably next month's meeting. The other capital project, project that's underway, um, the village awarded the contract last month for the highway garage, um, to replace that, so that's initiated, we have all the signed paperwork back, and the bonds and insurance from the contractor, and they're starting to, um, get their parts and pieces, and their boards, and concrete, and piping, and all that kinda stuff lined up, so, um, coordinating with, with, uh, DPW superintendent and his, his, his crew, um, to have that work be done this year. That's all, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Smith?
David?
Everybody got a report on the storm, except for Mr. C, I think. We want somebody to, for some reason.
Nothing personal, huh?
Nothing serious going on, like Bill said, the little well project, we've been solely working on the shop, getting ready to start dismantling things there. Um, and everything's been fairly, fairly quiet.
Yeah, painting over on Brew Street, right?
Yeah, we were doing locates for the survey for the water, water project.
Okay.
Yep.
That came up, seeing the residents around there wondering what it was.
Yeah, Brew Street, Union Street, and Alten Prospect.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Anything all good?
Oh, it looks good.
Thank you.
Okay, my trustee reports will start with Nate.
Uh, well, we're still, uh, with the parks and the pool, heading, heading into spring, still actively looking for lifeguards for the summer at the pool. Like I've said before, lifeguards must be at least 15 years old, uh, water safety instructors must be 16 years old with a water safety instructor course. A course is being offered in late June at the Walton Village Pool. The Candy Russell Laps for Lifeguards event last year earned enough money to mostly or entirely pay for any Walton Central School students who are interested in taking the course. Other students, other people may come from other villages, but the Candy Russell Laps for Lifeguards is only gonna cover the, the Walton students, it's for the local students. Uh, the pool's gonna open at the end of June, we don't, we don't have an exact opening date, but it'll be, you know, right around graduation. Over at the theater, uh, committee is just beginning the process of seeing about redoing the green rooms. Uh, some possible end results could be removing some paneling and putting up wallboard, uh, new ceilings, new lighting, new carpet, better furniture, shelving, storage, paint, uh, possibly exposing existing brick. There's a lot of ideas, and it's just in the beginning stages, and of course, uh, these things would be covered by the, uh, WTPA through grants and raised money. Uh, in addition, they're possibly looking at a sprinkler fire retardant system for, for the building, and looking into grants to do, uh, work for that sort of thing, and Delaware Engineering has been, uh, spoken with as well. And again, these are in the very beginning stages, so we don't really need to ask for anything just yet, just looking at it. Uh, coming up at the theater, we have Music on the Delaware, uh, The Coffee House at the Theater presents Don Gilkerson, uh, this coming Sunday, April 10th, at six, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, up in the beautiful new Andrea Paternoster Room. Uh, classic flicks this month is shared, or Charade, excuse me, starring Cary Grant and Audrey Hepburn, if you haven't seen it, see it, it's a great movie, and it's gonna be here at the theater, April 21st, Thursday night at 7:00 PM. And then Music on the Delaware is presenting Take Three on Saturday, April 30th, at 7:30 PM. And, uh, with a flair for the wild and unexpected, the genre-defying trio Take Three brings the refinement of a rigorous classical music background and infuses it with rock star charisma. Known for their infectious and down-to-earth onstage personalities, this threesome leaves their indelible mark on captivated crowds around the country, performing their arrangements of top pop hits, Americana, and classical favorites. So, everybody, do yourselves a favor, come on out on Saturday, April 30th, to see Take Three at the beautifully restored Walton Theater. And that's all I have this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, you have anything?
I do. Um, so our code officer, Josh Morgan, is requesting to go to a training, um, that's for, uh, flooding and stormwater managers' training program. Um, it's important that we give him the opportunities to continue his, uh, education and training, it's something that's critical to our village. Uh, flooding is an issue here, so we need to make sure that he's equipped to manage that in that role. So, uh, he'll be attending two days of, of the three, so I would make the motion that we approve, uh, in, during that class, in a second.
When is it?
May, May 3rd to 5th, right? 3rd to 4th he's going, I guess, I don't know what two days he's going.
Is that the one he's sharing the class with Tony Hammond?
Yes.
Yeah. No cost to the village.
Where is it?
Well, yeah, shared.
There is stuff.
Shared class.
Shared class.
Shared class, I, I believe the hotel, or the motel's gonna be paid for by Tony Hammond, we, we pay the whole way, we won't have to pay for the cost of the class this time.
How much?
Whatever he, he uses his, his time up there, we would share the cost. The, the, because it's a, a three-day thing, it's two nights a motel, but that will be paid 100% by the Tony Hammond, who's probably, who's gonna talk the charge.
So where is it?
Schenectady? Schenectady, yep. And, uh, the days that he's picking are the two that, um, building code officials are recommended to attend, so, and making the most out of what we get.
Well, we had a motion, you had a second.
We had a motion, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay.
That's it for me.
Thank you.
Oh, the only thing I can see is, is, I do know, the problem with the police radio is they're not, they're not being able to make contact with, uh, Delhite. Now, they've got a price of about a thousand dollars a piece per radio. Uh, right now, we're working with four officers and, and a chief. I don't know, do we have a specific request, or is it just, this is the proposal he gave us?
That's the, that's the updated one.
That's the one, yeah.
Yeah. The original one was like 7,000 for eight radios, this is four.
Yeah, this was cheaper, I, I know Logan said he thought some of them were a little bit cheaper. Is, is that much money in his budget?
Well, I looked today after payroll got posted, there is personal services money, I think we're gonna have.
Enough to cover the 45.
Yes.
Okay. So then I would, I would suggest that we do buy those, I mean, they do have to be able to talk to the rest of the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do. You making the motion?
I did.
Second. Eric made the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carrie.
Here over the scanner, you can definitely attest that you need some improvement there.
That's a whole different system.
Steven, anything?
We're in trouble at the wastewater treatment plant until we get things lined out with the new dairy in town. Other than that, everything's wonderful.
Yeah, I, it's, it's, we had a meeting with him last week, it, it seemed that they really wanna work with us, it is, but I, I really thought, they, I think they don't know really what is causing these issues, but I'll speak to John tomorrow morning, I have an idea that.
Eh, it'll get fixed.
Yeah. Anything else? That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, Major's Report. The only thing I have, Soil and Water, uh, put in a request to go on West Street and do a typographic, graphic study, they're just gonna go on there and do it, but they need permission before they can go on our property, they gotta, a form to sign, so I'm just need to have permission to call a typographic, topographic.
Topo, topo, yeah.
Yeah, topo study.
Topo survey.
So, I need permission to, okay, this is the study.
I don't see a problem with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, the only other thing I can get, else I can give you is a little update from the bowling alley, it's, we, we both signed the contract, there's no issue with it, the, the problem is getting a survey to come down and survey the property. I, I spoke to the, the new owner, and he says, the hell with it, if I can't get it done by the 15th, we'll do, we'll do a closing without it. He says, I'll trust you guys, that you're certain, it's gonna be the same survey we have anyway. So, he, he's tentatively gonna have a date on the 15th, so, he's longing to get in there, can't wait to get in, so everything is, is looking good.
Do we close?
We're gonna do everything, we signed the contract, we're gonna do it through the mail, we're not gonna do a in-person closing. Everybody, both sides agree to it. And, um, other than that, um, probably a lot of people seen that where Brandeis is, there's a new business that went in there, um, a guy who does candle manufacturing, um, I went and talked to him, he comes from, um, Brooklyn, moves his business up here, he's gonna be making, manufacturing everything there, he has his own website, looks pretty good, but, uh, it's, uh, it's another storefront that's full. A lot of people are talking about Tom's Tire Barn, where it was gonna be the pizzeria there, they, he had sold out to a, a company that has a couple franchises, and, um, they were closing, they closed, they signed the papers to closing the other day. I don't know, still don't know for sure what franchise it is, but there will be a franchise coming into that location. First, the, the owner of Benny's Pizzeria, who owns the building, is going to, he's got the permit, and he did the best to study, he's gotta take the building down, that's part of his deal, he's taken the building down, and when that's all done, soon as I can find out exactly what franchise it is, I will let everybody know. Another thing, 150 Delaware, which is the corner of Townsend in Delaware, used to be where Hots Plumbing is, they've renovated that hole inside, they painted it, they put in sheet rock, everything. If you notice, there's some signs on the bottom store, if anybody interested in a business, they're gonna give you very, very, very good prices, just open up and see. On the second floor, they've already rented it out to a local artist, who's gonna take three or four rooms upstairs, it's gonna be an art gallery. So it's, uh, it seems that everything is, is moving in a, in a very good direction. And that's all I have for now. Any public input? Anyone else have any public input to say? Okay. Next thing, number nine, the 21, 2021, 2022 budget amendments.
Questions, comments, if not, I just need a motion that you guys approve it.
You've seen them, no comment, they need a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carrie. Number 10, the unpaid AR invoices levy to the 22, 2022, 23 tax bill.
I, I gave you a listing, um, so anybody that hasn't paid before the end of April, um, I need a motion to levy that unpaid bills to the tax. to levy that unpaid bills to the taxes.
Make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Excuse me. Number 11, Memorial Day Parade. I got the letter. I'll read it. Truman C. Toby, Post 32 Walton, hereby request permission to hold the Memorial Day Parade Monday, May 30th, 2022. Parade will form at the school bus garage parking lot between 9:30 and 10:00 AM. Parade will start at 10:00 AM proceeding from the bus parking lot to the Veterans Plaza where a brief ceremony will take place. From there, we will proceed to Water Street, to Bridge Street, then to the World War II Memorial on Stockton Avenue, where another ceremony will take place. From there, they will proceed to the Walton Cemetery. After the ceremony is there, the parade will travel back to Stockton Avenue, again stopping at the World War II Memorial in closing ceremony. The parade will then proceed to Garden Place and then will end. Thinking in advance, Lenny Rusevich, Commander, Post 32.
I just need a motion for you guys to authorize me to file that parade permit.
My motion be authorized. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, the Lions Club is going to give the insurance form that we've been filling this for the last few years, so...
I thought there's a town that has a planned that weekend.
Well, also on that weekend, the Lions Club is doing the flower sale that Friday... that's Saturday and Sunday. And the town is having... it's going to be like a... well, the chamber's doing it at the place, at the Veterans Plaza.
Paddlepalooza.
Yeah, paddle.
It's a kayak paddling, trying to get people to put in at either the Ice House Turn or the Coverbridge in Hampden or any other number of places just up and down the river and come out at the boat launch at the green space right behind the town building down here in Walton. And there will be a band, there will be a DJ, there will be food vendors and craft and other kinds of vendors, and it should be quite the to-do.
And the Lions Club will be there selling flowers also.
And the Lions Club will be there selling flowers also.
All right, thank you. We need to discuss the police.
I...
We need to go in and vote, you know?
No, we have to do that in executive session.
Nothing for executive session, right?
No, because we haven't gotten our copy yet.
Is there nothing else we need in our executive session for, right?
No.
Then I guess that's it. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Have a good night.
Wow.